Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the April 8, 2019 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Pettis Reed will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Pettis?
Shall we pray? Most gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for the day you've given us an opportunity to come together to deal with the issues of this county. Father, we ask that you guide us, that you direct us, that you give us the ability to do what we should do. Father, we're so thankful for what we have here in this county and all the many blessings that we have. And may we always remember the blessings that we do have, they do come from you. We ask that you watch over us, you guide us and protect us. We offer this prayer in your Son's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to my life, and to the United States of America, and to this republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Call or roll, please, Gail.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Chip Pinion. Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Here.
Jim Aberwater. Lee Bogle.
Here.
Mike Kush.
President.
Mike Vaught.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
President.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Gail. We have no minutes to approve tonight. We also have no items that have been withdrawn, so we'll get right into our agenda. But first, let me welcome a former county commissioner, Mr. Will Jordan here, that served on the county commission and the planning commission for, I believe it was 16 years. Will, welcome back. And I'd also like to welcome some other county commissioners that are here tonight because of some zonings that are in their area or close to their area. And I see Michael Rather here. I also see Joe Frank Jernigan here, and I see Robert P. here. And I hope I didn't miss anyone, but thank you for your attendance and your participation in tonight's agenda. With that, we'll get into our scheduled agenda, Item 6. All of these will be public hearings that are requested to have, requested to have public hearings because of the proposed rezonings. As we get into the public hearings, there's a lot of folks here tonight. Our guidelines indicate that you have, if you wish to speak, you have three minutes to speak, and we'd like for you to adhere to those three minutes because if you don't, we probably would never get out of here before this day ends. So I'd like for you to adhere to those three minutes. And if you need a couple more minutes, you can request it from me, and you'll be granted that. But our speaking on these public hearings tonight, your speaking will be limited to three minutes. All of these public hearings, whether they're approved or disapproved by this planning commission, will be referred to the full county commission for a second public hearing. And those public hearings before the county commission will be held on Thursday, May the 16th at 6:30 PM in this courtroom. And once again, thank you for your attendance and your participation in tonight's meeting. Item 6A, all of these are rezoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings. Item 6A1, the item is 19-A-006 for Will Jordan. Location is 4483 Sulphur Springs Road. Commission district is 3. The county commissioner is Michael Rather. The size of the site is approximately 6 and 1/2 acres. It's on Texas map 48. The existing zoning is RM, residential, medium density. Proposed zoning is for commercial services, CS. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and good evening, commission members and all the folks in the audience. As you stated, this property is located along Sulphur Springs Road. The applicant is proposing to zone two of the properties. You can see them on the map that's on the big screen right now. The top parcel is parcel 8101, and then the portion of the bottom parcel, which is parcel 100.02, you can see the hatched area there. That area is proposed to be rezoned. The remaining area below that is to remain RM. When we originally sent the notices and the maps out, staff had erroneously put that as being rezoned as well, which is why we resent the notices, just so everybody was clear that that portion is going to remain RM that's in white on that map that's before you. There's no concept plan at this point, no development plans that the applicant has. The applicant explained in his application materials that this property, since it does join 840, and is next door to property already zoned commercial services, which again, you can see on the map that's on the screen before you right now, he thought it'd be appropriate to rezone that for future use. The closest non-residentially zoned property, again, is right to the west of this, immediately adjacent to the interchange, which is also zoned commercial services, which is the similar zone that they're asking for tonight. The next application we'll be considering is for property immediately adjacent to this for commercial services zoning. And you can see on the map that property directly to the northeast, north-northeast, is already zoned commercial services as well. And a little further, that, well, actually where the hand is right there is where the Dollar General is located, and then a couple of properties next to that. We have seen site plan for a convenience market that was approved for property across the street, where Mike's got the hand on that piece of property. It was approved by the planning commission. Nothing has been submitted as far as any construction drawings or any kind of a pre-con on that, pre-construction meeting. We also did receive a site plan for the existing property to the west of this, down on the site plan we just got.
This one?
This one.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. That one, we did receive it. It still needs time to cook, so to speak, so we're not going to consider that at the day meeting in a couple of weeks. That'll probably be coming up in May. But just to let you know that we are starting to see some development plans of this. Access to this property would be from Sulphur Springs Road either directly or via the existing frontage roads, as you can see on there. These roads are under the jurisdiction of the highway department. We would require a traffic study to be submitted for any development of those properties. There was a traffic study submitted with the site plan for the property immediately to the west, but again, we'll review that for next month and take a look at what its recommendations are. We would also be requiring testing to be done on those frontage roads to determine their ability to accommodate increased traffic on them. Landscaping and buffering would be required for those properties that are adjacent to residentially zoned properties. Most of this property in the area being zoned commercial, buffering may not be as big of an issue, but there will still be some surrounding properties zoned residential. So again, if this is approved, that'll all be reviewed at the site plan review stage. And performance standards, again, would apply as far as noise, dust, odor, et cetera. We do believe, from a staff standpoint, that this is an area of transition, as you've seen for several of the rezonings we've looked at over the last few years. Commercial uses already exist to the east of the subject property, and additional property to the west, as we stated, in north-northeast have been rezoned the same classification as being requested by the applicant tonight. So we do also believe that this is consistent with the recommendations of our plan, and staff does recommend approval. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff? Ready for our public hearing? Before we conduct a public hearing, I'd like for the applicant to step forward, please, and give us a brief report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, I'm Will Jordan, 3923 Shacklet Road. My brother and I have owned these two pieces of property, one for 16 years, one for 20. We have no immediate plans for development since the neighbors across the access road got annexed. The ones right next to us for the next public hearing, we thought, I mean, rezoned, we thought we would do it for future use. We have no, you know, development plans at this time whatsoever, but it is right there on interchange. Chairman Phillips said it's 6 and 1/2 acres. I believe it's about 16 and 1/2 acres.
16 and 1/2.
And we do realize that the larger tract, the wooded tract, is, the majority of it is a bowl, and it holds all the water from all the surrounding property, especially back toward Sulphur Springs and Leanna. And there'd be no way we'd ever consider filling any of that bowl at all. There's just some of the upper ground, which is closer to the end of the road, which we feel is probably developable, but you have to have places for retention and detention and things like that. But there's no, would be no plans whatsoever, and wouldn't be allowed anyway, to change the drainage out there and put any water back on any of the neighbors or anything. And just to make sure we cleared it up, we realize that the majority of that wooded tract is not developable, and we will not be putting any fill in that depression area down through there. And that would be sometime in years to come. Like I said, we've owned those woods since 98, I think, and when, you know, it could be 20 more years before we actually do anything, anyway. I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Jordan? Thank you. This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for Item 19-A-006. This is a commercial services rezoning request for Will Jordan. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Name and address.
What'd you say?
Name and address.
Okay. Jesse, J. Nelson, C. Burges, S. N., G. R. O., D. B. S., and it's 4341 Chalkwood.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the committee, for allowing me just a moment. I have more of a question than a comment specifically. Am I allowed to address Will Jordan?
No.
Not? Can I address the committee?
I'm sorry.
Can I address the committee?
That's what you're here for, is to make some public comments.
Okay.
The discussion process is not open at this time, unless there's something that we can clear up for you, and we'll try to do that.
I would greatly appreciate anything that you could clear up for me. Not that long ago, there was a, there was a planning meeting over at Walter Hill Elementary School regarding the proposed convenience center expansion on Sulphur Springs Road. During that meeting, there was conversation between some neighbors and the county commissioner, Mr. Rather. The question was brought up about big trucks over on, behind where the dump, the proposed dump site, or the convenience expansion site is going to be. When those questions were asked to the county commissioner regarding big trucks and possible transfer, meaning as in waste transfer, I mean, they were not denied at that time. My concern, as a citizen that lives in the area, especially with small children, my concern is, of course, big trucks, miles per hour, continued trash, and a possible transfer. If this particular location is zoned commercial, then that opens up the ability for that to happen. I would love to have information on whether or not that, I know Will Jordan spoke, and he said that that was, you know, that that was not in the works, but as a person that lives there, like I said, with the small children, with small children and someone who horseback rides, I would also, you know, love to have clarification on if that's even something that is possibly in the works for the future, and things of that sort. I see some head shaking, but that was my main concern as a citizen there, in that location.
Was there a question that we could help you with?
Yeah. Yes. Was there any conversation, or is there a possibility that that could be used as waste transfer? Big trucks, it would make sense to make it commercial. You can move waste in and out, especially, there's been conversation that the big part of the dump may possibly go away in the near future, so waste would have to be transferred in and out. If there is a convenience center, then that would definitely open the door for the property owner having a commercial lot to make a lot of money off that. So that is my concern. I just wanted to know if that was in the works, or if there was conversation regarding that.
I'll try my best to answer that. All we're here is to rezon the property. There's a multitude of things that could go on it, and as far as this commissioner knows, and maybe the planning staff knows, we have no inside information as to what could go on that piece of property.
So it could, in fact, happen that it could be a waste transfer station. We just don't know that that's going to happen right now.
If I can, I'll try to answer that.
Yes, sir.
As of, right now, there aren't any specific regulations in the zoning warrants regarding transfer stations. Those are something we would have to come up with. Now, that being said, it says specifically in the ordinance that if the use isn't enumerated here, that that's not something that you can really see in the zone. Now, quite frankly, I wouldn't foresee approving a waste transfer station, like you're talking about, in a commercial services zone. Commercial service is kind of our middle-of-the-road zoning for commercial.
Okay.
We have a commercial neighborhood, which is kind of our lightest. Commercial services in the middle. Commercial general is more wide open. But quite frankly, I would see something like that more in an industrial zone, like a light industrial, maybe by special exception to commercial general. We haven't gotten that far yet, but I'll, you know, reiterate what the chairman said, that we have had no conversations regarding that whatsoever, as far as this is a specific location, or really, any specific location, and how we would regulate that. But I wouldn't foresee commercial services zoning being an appropriate zone for something like that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this rezoning request?
My name is John William Reed. I own 7/8ths of the property bordering Mr. Jordan's property, and own the entire back of the Homestead property, which is up for zoning. First off, I'd like to say that I've talked with Mr. Jordan about this several times, or twice, for sure. And I'd also like to have these pictures presented at this meeting. This, excuse my blindness. This property, as Mr. Jordan has already said, is a bowl-type property. There is actually a natural, open, underground water. If you will lighten that property again, if you see my property, just take all the white lines away for a moment, and I'll show you another thing there. You will see a ditch line coming across my property into an open spring, or creek, that flows a continuous flow of water, and has done so, I know, for 61 years, over into that property. Those pictures prove that. We have pictures of the entire dark wooded area property, which was the original Jack House property, made to his brother John House, and then bought out by Will and Buddy Jordan. That is the property I have question for. The Dickerson property to the right of the access road going out, I have no question about that property. That's high ground. He bought the land, he paid for it, he has the right to develop it and make all the money he can on it, the Homestead property. My father owned that property at one time. He sold it, it's those people's right to make all the money they can. If you will look and address those pictures to the public, those pictures will show water already backing up in access across my entire property. This is one of them. These are areas of water backing up. Here is a big, and there has been, you know, the water on the back spot, if you will notice the water backing up, if that property has anything done to it, it's going to back water all the way up to the Dollar General property. My question is, I developed, I owned and developed the Dollar General property. I owned and developed the six acres of mini warehouses out there. I had to come here with a plan, and ask for zoning, and was granted so because I had a plan, and this was done, and this was done. He's opening and asking for just a blanket of property that is floodwater property, in which you can see water standing deep. There's places of water that will be knee-deep to waste deep on me on that property. Why does a man want a commercialized property like that? It doesn't make sense. I've even offered to buy the property out, and he refuses to sell it. But why? When he finally gave me a price, he priced it at $50,000 an acre for flood groundwater. And yet, the lady that you heard testify before, she's not just an ordinary lady, sir. That lady is a U.S. Federal Department of Defense negotiator. She negotiates equipment for Patriot missiles that protects everybody in this room. And yet, we know for a fact, she heard Commissioner Michael Rather speaking with another family at a Walter Hill meeting about big transfer trucks coming around in behind that property. Now, if he can prove to me that he can improve that property without flooding my property, then I'm all for it. But to just give him an open blanket of, you can commercialize it with no plans, no drainage, we have another problem in that area, even with the other commercial property. Traffic backs up from the three-way stop every afternoon, not just up Sulphur Springs Road, but all the way up that exit ramp to Sulphur Springs Road, off 840, and people pulling over to the side of 840. What's the plans on controlling that traffic? What is the plan on controlling the flooding and the backing up of that water on that woodland? That's what I want to know. That's what my complaint is, and that's why I oppose the wooded area, the ground facing the Dickerson property, facing Sulphur Springs Road, the Homestead property. Hey, they bought it, they paid for it, they have every right to develop it. I have no objection to that. I don't see a problem with that. But to develop flood property which has an open, natural water window that carries water back into the ground, that also, every time Stone's River backs up, brings water out of the ground, that's what causes all that heavy flooding in those pictures. Now, they might say, dig a retention pond. Limestone rocks, sir, doesn't hold, doesn't, it doesn't absorb water. It holds water and brings more water. I've run up and down through the areas when I was a kid. You're not going to get a retention pond in there. Now, if he can have soil sites next to the Dickerson property that prove the soil is there, with a plan, and an actual engineered study, then let's see it. But to give him open rain would be like me bringing one of my horses up here on the square, pulling the bridle off of it, and saying, "Go wherever you want to." It's a danger to the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I'm sorry. Commissioner Rather. While Commissioner Rather is coming up, Mike, would you care to address what would happen if this was zoned commercial, or even developed from a residential perspective, what we would do as a county to look into the water issue there? Would you kind of explain that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We would need to review and evaluate detailed construction plans of how the stormwater would be handled for this site or any other site in the county. So if, it just depends on what the development is, you know, the intensity of it, whatever is involved with that, we would evaluate what's there before, what's there, what's proposed after, and how are they going to handle that additional flow. So volume-sensitive areas like this, they would have to capture an additional volume that they'd be creating by adding more rooftops, driveways, parking lots, anything like that in an area. So it's not going to be easy. We were, it's a challenge we face throughout the county of how are we going to drain these karst areas? But that's something that the design engineer would have to prove to us that it's going to work, it's not going to impact the neighbors, it's going to be an asset to the community.
So in essence, we, as a commission, would have to approve any plan
Yes.
that's put on that, any site plan that's put on that piece of property, and to our satisfaction, that the water issue is going to be not only engineered well, but maintained.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Michael?
Hi, Commissioner Chairman and commission members. First of all, I just want to say that I have not had one single phone call or conversation with anybody about this zoning change. And I'm glad that you guys just explained the fact that just because the zoning gets changed, that Mr. Jordan can go in there tomorrow and build whatever he wants to. No, he comes right back here. Right? There's some processes that he'll have to go to. He can't just do whatever he wants to do on there. So first thing I want to tell you, I've not had one conversation or one phone call about opposing it or supporting it. So as a member of that community, I don't live too far away from it, if you go down I-24, what do you see at every interchange? I've had this discussion with folks on Jefferson Pike and 840. You're going to see the McDonald's and the Sonics and convenience stores, and it's just coming. It will eventually be a Jefferson and 840. It's already working that way out in Leanna and 840. There are three businesses out there now, and I will say, the Dollar General, although it reduced my bank account, my wife's quality of life went up quite a bit. She, I think she was just ecstatic about a Dollar General out there. So it's coming eventually. I don't think it's unheard of for somebody to get their property rezoned and not really have a plan for it. Is that a fair statement? But again, whatever he's wanting to do, he's going to have to come back here and go through that whole process. And I'm going to speak for Will for just a second, and I think he's in agreement that he would be more than willing to put a restriction on this that would prohibit him from putting a transfer station at the worst place he can probably put a transfer station. That's not the place for it. That got started somehow. But he's shaking his head yes, that he would be willing to put that in writing, that there would be a restriction, that he would never let a transfer station come in there. And I think if, possibly if we talk solid ways, they might tell us that that's probably the worst place to put it. So as a citizen, I don't have a problem with it, even not knowing what's coming, because eventually, something's coming. It's already started. It's going to start on Jefferson Pike and 840. As far as the water, I've spent a little bit of time in the last couple of weeks with county engineer Mike Hughes, and I've been living here a long time, my entire life. My dad, I'm like fifth generation in this county, at least. After this last rain, not today's, but a week or two ago, I don't think you could have driven anywhere in this county, and there wasn't a water issue. I've been through the floods back in the 80s where Allen Road was underwater. I went underwater to hook to a tractor, or hook to my tractor and pull somebody out. That happened all over this county, and it is a problem. So the engineering staff are working real hard to control that, to figure out a way to not, you know, if water is draining down here underground, it could flood a place six miles away. So it's, it is a problem. They're working on it, and I'm positive that Will would do what needs to be done to address those types of issues as far as he could. But again, I'll stop just by saying, nobody's called me. But again, I'll stop just by saying, nobody's called me, no emails in opposition, and I'm kind of excited what I've heard's coming out there. That's just gossip, but it's coming either way. It's had every interchange on the interstate.
Thank you.
And I'm finished.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request?
Can I ask more questions?
Hold on one second.
I just wanted to point out, this, this is from a USGS flood study that was performed back in 2005, and this isn't the entire county, but these gray shaded areas are areas that are dependent on sinkhole drainage. And that's a large portion of the county, a very large portion. So we, we don't take this lightly. I mean, this is, this is a lot of acreage, a lot of, a lot of people live in these areas. So we, we, you know, we look at this very carefully, and we don't take this lightly. We, I mean, you know as well as I do, we've, we've let some projects that did not make it to construction because they didn't satisfy our regulations. So this is, we're very serious about this, and, and we take it very seriously.
Mike, since you've got that up there, I know this is a little outside of what we're talking about, are those area, are those areas solely dependent on sinkhole drainage, or it's in addition to a Blue Line stream?
Solely, yeah. You can see that the areas outside are, that, that drain to the surface waters. These areas all drain to sinkholes, and they're interconnected with the groundwater. So Mr. Reed's correct, when, when the groundwater, when the river's downstream and, and the groundwater becomes saturated and, and rises, water can back out of these sinkholes. So we're, we're very careful, we're very aware of, of this, this situation, we, you know, we look at it very closely. And it doesn't come to construction phase until it meets all our regulations, the state regulations.
Mr. Reed, did you want to make one more comment?
First thing I would like to do is ask each one of you, as a voting member of this committee, look at these pictures before you vote. Be knowledgeable and proactive and not reactive. Everything I've heard about this project, like I said, the Homestead Place, the Dickerson Place, the Tumbleton Place on the left side of the access, I have no problem with that. Which is like this man just said, when the Stone River gets up, water's coming out of those holes too. See what kind of water we're dealing with. Don't, don't vote and say, pull the bridle off a horse, turn it loose, we'll deal with it later. Some horses are hard catch, folks. I ask you to be proactive and save this county money.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Doug. Doug on the iPad, we hold that for a second.
Yes.
What does that red band represent?
That's a TVA easement. There's portions of this property that you can see, anything under that line is within a TVA easement. So there's portions of the western side of that wooded area, and Mike, it's on the, yeah, Mike's going to bring it up. But there's portions on the, on the wooded area, but there's also a little bit also on the subject property, that one closer, closest to Suffer Springs Road, that if this were to ever be developed, regardless of what it's developed for, they would have to stay out of that TVA easement. I think you can do things like parking and, and things like that, but no structures. Now, there's no line there again, but that is a TVA easement through there.
Doug, let me back up and once again say that regardless of whether this is residentially zoned or commercially zoned, and it were to be developed, there would have to be a plan put together.
That's correct.
If a developer wanted to put houses on this, it's his right, it's already zoned residential, but he'd have to put some type of plan together to deal with the water.
That is correct.
And there's no difference in, no difference in that and in the commercial development.
Correct. With the water, with the traffic, with this TVA easement, I mean, they're going to have to deal with it one way or another.
So whatever the use of it would have to be dealt with, the water would have to be dealt with.
That is correct.
Very good. Any question, any other questions?
Mike, can you show us the 2010 flood map?
This, this was taken two days after it stopped raining. So it's hard to see inside these trees, but I imagine there's a lot of water standing in those trees, similar to the sinkhole behind here.
Is any part of this in-
The Tumbleton property.
Is any part of this in the floodway or floodplain?
No, ma'am. It's, it's not in the FEMA flood zone, it's just a localized flood zone. See, Zone X outside of the FEMA flood zone. But it's, it's just a bad, it's just as bad a problem of being in a FEMA flood zone, this localized sinkhole flooding.
Mike, I can't see it from here. What's your lowest elevation in the wooded area, and what's your highest, or, or close to your highest elevation?
Well, we have, this isn't a real detailed topography map, it's only two-foot contours, but they have a 528 elevation here, and, let's see, you've got 532, 534 that goes into Mr. Reed's property. So there, you know, six feet of elevation before you get, you get into Mr. Reed's property, five feet maybe?
There's, there should be a sinkhole within that 528-
Yes, sir.
-groove rate here.
Yes, sir.
Mike, I think this wooded area, instead of taking a lot of, it belches forth water, and that's, that's the big problem here, it gets over on Mr. Reed right there when it, when the Stone's River rises. So therefore, that big crater in there has to be left intact as is, or it would generate more water on Mr. Reed, right?
It has, it has to be, the throat has to be left open, but there, there are ways to create extra volume. I mean, it, yes, it is solid limestone, but, you know, that's what dynamite's for, so.
But, so Mr. Reed would get more water, or it, it, he has, it has to maintain what it is exactly today, or, or better.
Right. Yes, sir. We would evaluate the, the sinkhole, have the design engineer, whoever works on this property, would evaluate the water surface elevation for, say, a hundred-year storm event, and, and before this property's developed. And then we would have them look at it after this property develops, when you've got additional runoff coming to this site. How are you going to handle that additional volume? How are you going to handle the open throat where water comes out? So there's, there's, it's a tricky, tricky situation.
As a general rule, I've never been a fan of speculative rezoning. I typically always do prefer when a site plan, or at least a concept plan, comes with the property. But with this being adjacent to 840, I don't conceivably see it ever being used as anything less than the zoning that's being requested. So if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion to approve. Subject to staff comments?
We have a motion and a second to approve item 19-A-006 for Will Jordan. Any other comments or questions?
Is it second?
All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. This item will go before the full county commission, as we said earlier, on Thursday, May the 16th, 6:30 PM in this courtroom. Item 6A2-19-A-007, Keith Strain, location 4473, Suffer Springs Road, commission district is three, county commissioner is Michael Rather, size of the site is approximately 2.3 acres, tax map 48. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thanks. Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This property is immediately adjacent to the property that was just considered on the commission's agenda. As far as what they're asking for and everything, it's similar to what Mr. Jordan was just asking for. I won't go into a whole lot of detail about that. I will say that the applicant has indicated a desire to put something like a convenience market on the property. So they do have a concept plan located with your agenda materials. All of the comments and different things that I said regarding Mr. Jordan's application are similar for this. From staff standpoint, again, we don't see this really any different than we saw the last application. This is an area in transition, and we do believe that this is consistent with our comprehensive plan, and we would recommend approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions specifically about this application, but again, the, the circumstances behind this one are almost identical to the last, so I'll spare you having to listen to me talk again.
Any questions for staff?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman. On page 21 of our iPads, Doug, there's a graphic, and it looks like it's labeled "existing." Are those buildings going to be removed?
If they were going to redevelop this property with a convenience market, something like that, they would, they would have to be. The page right before that, which I believe is, well, I'm sorry, page 20, kind of shows you the proposal, where the store and a canopy would be. So they would have to remove a lot of those existing structures on the property, yes.
Other questions for staff? Is the applicant present? Please come, come forward. Name and address, please.
Keith Strain, 9572 Valley View Road in Las Casas Parks Auction and Real Estate Company. We represent Mr. Thomas Oldstead at 4473 Suffer Springs Road. He has moved to Texas to be closer with family, and we have the subject property under contract now, subject to the ability of the rezoning for the Pareek family. And the Pareek family, they already own another convenience store not too far from there. They do a great job with their stores, and the Pareek family is here for any questions. We just simply made application.
Any questions? Thank you. Thank you. This time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item 19-A-007, Keith Strain. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Basically, you're here to say ditto of what I said last time I was up here. Again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is another piece of property that I haven't heard anything from anybody in favor or opposition. And I do want to point out that I'm very familiar, Mr. Hughes and I looked at it not too long ago, on Allen Road, the water in my dad's woods was probably five or six feet deep. And there is a sinkhole, two different ones. There's a sinkhole right across the fence on another development. And yes, that's where water goes, but if ground's saturated, the rivers are nice as meal, the river's over its banks, it does come this way too. But that is pretty much, Mr. Hughes, if I'm correct, that is an issue all over this county. So it's not just this property, and it's not just three or four properties county-wide. This is a county-wide issue.
Right. And this, this area, and it's hard to tell, but here's, here's 24, no, 24, 840, here's Thompson Road, this is Hooper Bottoms, and this is, goes all the way out to this same property that we're talking about. So the, all these are sinkholes, and these are areas that are dependent on drainage to these sinkholes. So it's, like I said, there, this is a large portion, this doesn't show all of Rutherford County, but this is a big hunk of Rutherford County that is dependent on sinkhole drainage systems.
So I'll finish up by saying, again, I've heard no opposition. I'm certainly for it. I think it's a, a good place to have whatever's coming, understanding that anything that's coming has to go through a lot more people than what's here tonight as far as up here. So again, I'll just ditto and say I approve, or I'm in favor of this piece of property as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rather. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request?
Chairman, may I add something?
You can.
Likewise, when we see this as a site plan, we will look at this very closely. This area has, has a lot of challenging soils. They have an existing septic system that they'll probably have to use, so they'll be limited on what they can do. You know, the, the, this, the system, the site will have to provide stormwater runoff protection, stormwater management. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a big challenge with just the site plan review, and they won't move ahead with this until they get site plan approval, which you'll see a site plan come back to, to this commission, which, you know, the staff will review, and we also get input from various consultants. So just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, Mike. Seeing no one else come forward, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for the approval of the staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 19-A-007 for Keith Strain. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. Item 6A3-19-A-008, Kelly Brook, Brooks for Bullseye Gun Gear and Pawn. This location is on John Bragg Highway, commission district is six, the county commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. Size of the site is approximately 22 acres, tax map is 109. The existing zoning is RL for residential low density. Proposed zoning is CS for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, the applicant is proposing to zone this property commercial services for use ultimately as retail, office, and a possible gun range. There is a concept plan that has been submitted with your materials tonight, which is on your iPads. You'll see that they are showing short, medium, and long-range shooting areas with that. As a way of historical background, there was a conditional use permit application that was made on this property back in 2006 for a construction company vehicle storage that was ultimately denied. Before going into the specifics of the application, as far as the commercial is concerned, I want to talk a little bit about the gun range itself. Outdoor gun ranges are classified as entertainment and amusement services outdoor in our zoning ordinance. This means that these uses, if somebody wanted to do this type of use, they're allowed by special exception. That means they're not allowed by right. They have to go for what's essentially called a special use permit, a conditional use permit, what we used to call a conditional use permit in our jurisdiction, which have to be considered by the Board of Zoning Appeals in all of the zoning districts. of Zoning Appeals in all of the zoning districts. So, the applicant has made a separate application for the gun range to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which will actually be heard this coming Wednesday at 4:30 in this room concurrent with this rezoning application. The outcome of this application tonight, the zoning of the property, has no effect on that special exception application. It would be allowed by special exception in residential zone or a commercial zone. So, I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. This zoning change is really to cover the other aspects of the application, namely the office and the retail use. The closest non-residentially zoned property is immediately to the east of this property, which is developed with a gas station and convenience market and some mini warehouse storage units as well. Access to this property would be from John Bragg Highway. John Bragg Highway is a state road, so any new or modified ingress egress points would have to be approved by TDOT. The proposed access point is between two existing median cuts. I don't anticipate traffic levels that would necessitate another median cut in this area, nor do I think one would be granted just because of the location. It's probably too close to the other two that are in there. That being said, if this were to be rezoned, and we did see an application similar to what we talked about the last two applications, we would have to see a site plan submitted to our office, which would ultimately have to be approved by the planning commission. Landscaping commercially zoned properties, again, have to do, have to install a type two buffer adjacent to residentially zoned properties. You can see this as a fairly heavily treed lot. You know, they can use existing plantings as far as the buffer is concerned, or if they plan on removing a lot of that, they would have to provide enough to meet our requirements. Again, something like that would be confirmed during the site plan review process, and again, performance standards would apply to this as well. We have received a number of phone calls regarding this, applications, and emails, letters, whatnot. I put a sample of a few of them on the tables before you. Most of the letters and things that we have received and the phone calls we have received have been more specific to the gun range, which I anticipated, so there's more of them than what you're seeing right there, which would be presented to the Board of Zoning Appeals. But, we have received some concerns as well about the zoning of the property. So, some of those will give you, those letters that we, that I presented to you would give you a kind of an overview of some of those concerns that some of the residents in that area have had. Again, we've talked to a number of people on this. I do expect that there's a lot of people in the audience. I expect that several of them will be speaking tonight. The big thing I just want to make clear again is regardless of what decision is made tonight, even if you approve this tonight, that does not approve the gun range. The gun range has to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals. You don't have the authority to approve that here at the planning commission, nor does the county commission have that authority. That's simply with the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have for staff.
BZA conduct public hearings?
Yes, sir, they do.
This will also be a public hearing before BZA?
Yes, that's correct.
If this is not approved tonight, will it go before the BZA?
Yes, it still will, unless the application were to be withdrawn prior to the meeting. But, in absence of that, then yes, this will still, regardless of what happens tonight, this will still go to the Board of Zoning Appeals on Wednesday.
Thank you, Doug.
I have a question. How long is the adjacent, I think it's convenience store and some mini storage you said?
Yes, sir.
How long ago was it zoned commercial?
It's been quite some time. It was zoned commercial before we did the comprehensive rezoning, so it's been a long, I don't have the exact date, but it's been quite a while.
Any other questions for staff?
Doug, I suppose one of the first ones we rezoned out that way, I think, was the store.
Yep. I mean, that's really the only commercial property out that way.
Long time.
Yeah, it's been that way for quite some time.
Any other questions for staff? Is the applicant present? Evening.
Chairman Phillips, Plan Commissioners, my name is Clyde Rounder, Huddleston Steel Engineering. I'm here representing Mr. Kelly Brooks. Clyde Rounder with Huddleston Steel Engineering. And due to the fact that we have a lot of interest in this project from the community, I'd like to withhold my presentation until they give theirs. I'd like to know what they're going to ask, so we can better respond to that versus kind of shooting in the dark. I talked to Mr. Brooks today, and there's a wide variety of concerns, so I'll do my best to answer those concerns with Mr. Brooks's help. Some of them are, you know, maybe very directly to how the gun range will function. He'll be there to help us navigate through that. But, if that's okay with you all, I wanted to withhold my presentation until I understand what their concerns may be. No, he's here. Yeah.
Point of order.
I mean, I can give my presentation, and I'm giving it again after the public hearing, so it's whatever you all would like me to do. Okay, I'll go ahead and at least walk through it and hopefully answer some of their questions, then we'll respond to the other questions as well.
The public hearing isn't open yet, and if you want to reserve comments to the public hearing, you're more than welcome to do that.
I would. I would like to do that. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant while he's up here? Thank you.
I have one question for the applicant. One of the big concerns that I have in this packet is the letter from CUD. And I know there's also a letter in here from Chief Farley where you've addressed, or he's addressed at least how he would handle, how he recommends that you handle fire suppression. Can you talk about that for just a second on what your plans are for fire suppression in case, in the event there would be a fire out there?
Well, being at every limit, we'd have to go with, you know, any kind of method that'd require that kind of water pressure that would be available. So, I'm not exactly sure. We haven't gotten a design of the building yet, and I'm not overly, I don't have a real good knowledge of all the different options, but obviously we know it'd be a requirement. It's not a heavy use. It's a metal building, and so it'd be materials that would be chosen that would be somewhat fire resistant. But, as far as actually responding to the actual design of the building, not quite there yet.
Yeah, the concern is regarding the storage of ammunition, because they're planning on selling ammunition there, and so that's the issue, is how would you handle fire suppression because of the ammunition?
And I'll ask Mr. Brooks to talk about that, because I'm not really familiar how that it's all stored, so if that's okay, he'll be able to answer that more than likely.
A letter in our package states the district's water system currently is not contingent to this development, so the water's not...
Right. As far as that's concerned, I haven't really studied that as far as knowing exactly how all the dynamics as far as the site plan are concerned. More than likely, in those kind of situations, any kind of water would have to be somewhat of a cistern type of situation where they have it available onsite. As far as fire suppression, there's other methods outside of using water for fire suppression, so that would go into the design of the building, as well as some sort of chemical treatment for those type of issues. As far as water availability for a restroom or something like that, that would have to be used through some sort of harvesting method through a cistern, what have you, versus having water available. It's not a heavily, the gun range is not something that's really heavily water intensive as far as a development's concerned. It'll probably have a restroom in there, but that'll be the extent of any sort of water concerns.
Other questions of the applicant at this time? Thank you. Before I declare the public hearing open, I see a lot of faces out there that did not speak in the first two, so I'm assuming there'll be a lot of input into this public hearing. And I will remind everyone that we have a three-minute restriction. If you need more, ask me for more. If not, and you're not through, I'm going to cut you off at three minutes, okay? We want everyone to have the opportunity to speak. This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item number 19-A008, Kelly Brooks for Bullseye Gun Gear &amp; Pawn. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. If you'd state your name and address here, so we'd get it for the record.
Terry Wilson, 9142 Walkup Road, Reedable, Tennessee. Since I've heard about this, my phone has been ringing off of the hook. The community of Reedable and including Cannon County is thoroughly against this. I own a farm there, and I have cattle, and people that shoot firearms around my cattle scares them and causes a large problem there. I'm concerned about pollution. It's called noise pollution. It'll be five days a week, weekends. It needs to be stopped before it starts. If you want a gun range, put it next to where you live. Ninety-five percent of the people I have talked to in the community of Reedable and Rutherford and Cannon County has been against this. I have one question to ask. Is there a soil site on this property? If you're going to have a commercial business, it's got to have a soil site. We've already found out there's no CUD water there, and as far as I know, there's not a soil site there for a public restroom. Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Anyone else? No need to apologize.
My name's Bubba Hackcliff. I live on 555 Cripple Creek Road. If you could pull that up. Where his property is located, if you come down Cripple Creek, my neighbor, my property backs up to that hill right there. And Chad and his wife and kids own that 500 or 483 acres of the old Jones property there. He purchased that from another person a while back that they were partners in. Chad's not here tonight. He has, you know, but he will be submitting a letter or something to you guys and the committee and everything. Super guy. And my property, that hill right there looks like nothing in that picture, but it's big. And you could take a shot and shoot, and it just echoes all the way down that mountain all the way to Bradaville and across to Reedable. And, I mean, you just got to live out there to understand what I'm saying. But, the noise would just be ridiculous out there from my back porch. I mean, it's basically in my back porch. From my back porch to the highway, I could hear it, and it would just be overwhelming. And I know Chad's against it, and I also heard something about the water as far as if there was a safety issue with the fire and stuff like that. That's a big mountain, and they're shooting guns, and guns ricochet and cause sparks. If there was something like that to happen, it could take out the whole mountain depending on which way the wind's blowing. And the wind doesn't, if it's coming from the north, south, whatever, it doesn't matter. It gets down in that valley, and it just travels where it wants to. It's a very dangerous site for a gun range. And I'm also not against, you know, I'm against the commercial part of it, too, y'all. So, I appreciate your time. Didn't mean to speak out while I was there.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Steve Agostino, and when I left the military, we could have moved anywhere. Thirty years ago, we decided on Rutherford County because of its school systems, rich history, and open areas. We all know the growth of Rutherford County was the first fastest growing county in the state, 10th fastest in the nation. We've grown 44% in the past 10 years, and that's expected to continue. Thirty-eight hundred new jobs created. All that growth comes with the cost of land. We can look all around the county and see areas that used to be large enough to hunt and shoot in safely that are gone. Now, they're factories, apartments, strip malls. With all those new residents coming to the county, you can rest assured there are lawful gun owners coming along with it. Tennessee's ranked 14th in the nation when it comes to gun ownership. Forty-three point nine percent of the population owning firearms, and more importantly, 34% of those households have children under the age of 12. And let me speak to the money aspect of it. Myself and many others like us are still going to outdoor ranges because we want to be in the sunshine. We're traveling outside the county to go hours or two hours away. All that money and time is being spent outside the county. So, in closing, I would just like to say that there needs to be a place for all these people coming into our city to shoot, ideally outdoors. There's ranges coming that may be indoors, but to practice hunting, you have to be outdoors, like I did it with my grandfather and father before him, and I've done it with my three kids and two of my three grandkids. But, all that area is gone. I think as a society, as a county, it's to provide a controlled outdoor environment for the people to learn firearm safety and to practice is not only our responsibility, it's our duty. Thank you.
You. Good evening. Name and address.
Management's Library, 10773 Vaught Road, Reedable. Thank you for allowing us to come forward. As you can all see, there's a room full of folks here that are opposed, first, to the rezoning of this property from residential to commercial. This is a residential area, a community with people that love one another and that stick together. That's the number one thing regarding the opposition of a residential area to commercial. First of all, the requister doesn't own the property as of yet. The sale of the property is contingent upon the approval of it being commercial. The requister has a plan, Mr. Brooks has a plan, but that plan is incomplete. That plan, there is no perk site. I know that definitely. I've called the realtor. It's being sold as is. There is no soil site or perk site. There is no current water. I know that's already been spoken. I know that. The rezoning of this property is for a gun range and retail space. Scientific evidence shows that lead poisons the land, which in turn can poison the water. The constant noise affects reproduction in animals. It affects the meat quality. This is scientific evidence of beef cattle, which we have beef farmers in the area. It also affects reproduction of animals. It will decimate the wildlife population in our area. There is a range just a few miles up the road that you can enjoy in Woodbury, Tennessee. Also, in this particular area, there are many people who have horses. Horses and guns do not mix, period. They do not mix. And also, I've been told by Mr. Brooks that the gun range will be opened at least six days a week. This is what he shared with me. So, that is constant fire, sunup to sundown for six days a week. Again, first of all, we oppose the rezoning to commercial. This is a residential area. We live here because, because we love the tranquility, the quietness, and the lack of traffic. We don't want to see anything to increase traffic, to increase noise pollution. We want our tranquil, quiet neighborhood. We went around to, in the neighborhood, 97% of the people that we were able to reach oppose this rezoning of commercial property for the purpose of a to reach oppose this rezoning of commercial property for the purpose of a gun range. So, I and many of my neighbors highly, highly, highly oppose, first, rezoning from residential to commercial, and especially for a gun range and a retail shop or a gun pawn shop. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? All these gentlemen's coming forward. Mike, could you address the soils that have been referred to a couple of times, how we would handle that?
Yes, sir. The soils... Oh, sorry. The soils would be under the review of the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, the groundwater department. But they would have to prove that there is a suitable soil site. And what I pulled up earlier was a survey that showed a soil site on it. If I can try to zoom in again. Says soil site from Platt by Tennessee Land Surveying Company, June 2nd, 1997. So, that would be under the review of the TDEC groundwater department to make sure that they had a suitable soil site there. Looking at the USDA soil, it doesn't appear that there would be. And if you bear with me just a second. There's a lot of, let's see, Gladville Rock, Outcroppin, Inman, Talbot. These aren't conducive, these are typically rocks. But you've got to figure that the convenience market has a soil site on it. They've found a soil site, I would assume, if they have bathrooms in there. So, you know, this USDA soil map is not meant for, you know, pointing out septic soils. It's mainly for farming to tell where suitable soils are. But, you know, just looking at the soil survey, apparently, they did find some back in this Talbot, but that would be up to the TDEC to determine.
That'd have to be updated.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
My name's Mike Bailey. I live at 10606 Vaught Road in Rediville. I don't do well speaking in public, so I'll try to keep it short. First off, we only had two or three days to prepare for coming here today, and we're preparing more for the next event. I'm speaking up against having this out there. If I had time, I would go to on-target shooting range, on-door range, and I would take a picture for you, because last time I was in there, I looked up, just right beside where you start to shoot, there's holes up in the ceiling. That's where people that learned how to shoot, some of them, make mistakes. So, what they're looking to do is put in a gun range for people to learn how to shoot right beside a four-lane highway, regardless of all the other things that Matt brought up, which is correct. But they're wanting to put a gun range beside a four-lane highway that's heavily trafficked. So, yes, they want to put the store there with it. We know that's what this is tonight's for. But approving the store gives them a little bit more ammo, you should say, to say we're going to have a approval of a gun range. So, I don't believe I can, but I'm just going to say, I would request that this get postponed until the gun range part comes up, because without that, there's no store. That's all I have.
Thank you. Evening.
Good evening. My name's Michael Slager. I live at 10773 Vaught Road. I too am a retired veteran of twenty-four years. And I moved to Rediville with my wife of four prior generations in the area. We have a horse farm just about a mile from this location. Horses and guns don't mix. Also, the proposed site is right next to a beer store. Do we really want to be selling guns and having alcohol right next door to each other? Also, this is a very large farming community. I have a hay farm. There's beef farms and dairy farms. And we pay our taxes. This type of property coming into the community will drop our property values. And is the county prepared to take that reduction in county taxes from all of the farmland that's not going to be sold in that area? I urge you very much to oppose the generation of this commercial property. Thank you.
Thank you. Evening.
Charlie Gregory, 1684 McElroy, Rediville. Within the last ten years, I've bought my property in Rediville, and we were much in favor of moving closer to friends out in the Big Springs area. And every one of my friends and even people I talked to in the Big Springs area were very upset about the Big Springs Gun Range close to where they live. Therefore, I made a decision to move to Rediville so I don't hear the Big Springs Gun Range. So, with that said, my investment has been in Rediville because of the tranquility that I have received there and have built my house and have stuck in roots. And I've been here forty years, and I have been known to shoot off my front porch. So, if the ammo store goes in, and if you're cheaper than Walmart, I'll probably come visit you. But I'm totally against the gun range and what it may bring.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Members of the planning commission, my name is Ben Lewis. I'm here on behalf of Madeline Jones, John Mathis, and his wife Sarah Mathis. They reside at 354, 360, and 360B Lassiter Road. That is one hundred and thirty acres. That is directly south of what is highlighted in yellow right there. What has been proposed tonight is not only a gun range, that is what has concerned many people, but also a pawn shop and a gun shop. If you look, and if we look at the proposed plan for the gun range specifically, it is directed right over the corner of this property that Mr. Mathis, his wife, and Ms. Jones live on. They're all one family. Ms. Jones, it's her daughter-in-law who lives there as well. What they do on that property is they have a farming operation. They have cows. They have horses. They have riding trails throughout all one hundred and thirty acres, going all the way up to the fence line that connects with that property. Their daughter rides horses up on that property. And they live there, and their house, as you can see, is approximately seven hundred and fifty feet to a thousand feet from that property line. We've heard tonight of people with concerns of being a mile away with a horse farm, a mile away with a cattle farm. They're seven hundred and fifty feet away with a horse farm and a cattle farm. We know that guns and horses don't mix. What happens with someone's child is on a horse when a gun goes off. This is not a commercial area. It's very clear that this area has one convenience store that's really more of a necessity than anything when you have twenty miles between Woodbury and Murfreesboro, more of a necessity than anything. But this pawn shop and this gun shop, there are serious concerns that come with the commercial area in bringing that to the rural and the residential area. One, it's not in keeping with it. Two, the noise it will bring and the traffic it will bring. And three, just the patrons that come to these kinds of properties. On behalf of Ms. Jones, I can tell you that there has been an instance of robbery at the convenience store. Well, those individuals were found on Ms. Jones' property. They were arrested on her property. Just as recently as a month ago, I believe, Bullseye had a robbing or a burglary at their own facility, and were bringing this to a more remote location in the middle of really nowhere and allowing people to potentially do the same thing there. And that's a concern for the individuals who live right next to it, seven hundred and fifty feet away. You have a gun shop, then potentially someone steals a gun from and then goes to their house. That's an obvious concern. There are also the other concerns that other people have noted, destroy the hunting and the wildlife, and just generally, the fact that this is not in keeping with any of the area that's there. Additionally, if we could go back to the survey that was mentioned previously, I believe there's a boundary line at the bottom that goes through a pond. I'm not sure when this was taken. I'm not sure if a new one's been done. But I know Mr. Mathis has a serious concern with where that boundary line is, that portion of the soil site that's mentioned there is actually on his property and that this boundary line is incorrect. That's a concern, and I think it's something that should be heated as we go through this. But kind of to wrap up here, and lastly, let me certainly not gloss over this fact, Mr. Mathis is a twenty-year combat veteran in the military, Army. He has severe PTSD. He goes to the VA hospital. Can you imagine what having a gun range in his backyard is going to do for him? It's not something that he wants. It's not something his family wants. It's something that will be detrimental to his health. Lastly, as I wrap up here, I want to go through what the real purpose and authority for our zoning regulations are. First, to promote and protect the public health, safety, morals, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the people. As you can see here tonight, this is probably one of the larger crowds that you have come in oppose something. Obviously, it's a matter of serious concern to their public health and safety. Secondly, it's you are, the zoning ordinance are to prohibit uses which are incompatible with the character and development of the districts and the area. Obviously, this is one of those. And lastly, to provide protection against fire, explosion, noxious fumes, and other hazards. Obviously, a concern here that we've had from many people. So, I think there are many concerns here that are legitimate from all of the people who've spoken, and certainly from the neighbors who are immediately south of the property, that not only it will affect their health personally, but it'll affect the area as a whole. Thank you. And we would ask that you deny the zoning application to change it from residential to commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Frank, we've got someone else coming up.
Well, I just wanted to come and say that I live next to a gun range, and I was told before I moved there that it sounded like a war zone. And it doesn't, which I'm thankful for. We live within a thousand feet of the OK Corral in Woodbury, just one ridge over. The trees pretty much absorb all the pistol and shotgun sound, so the only thing we ever hear is a rifle. And that's in the winter when the trees are down, or when the leaves are down. It's not much. Rifles are expensive. Rifle ammunition's expensive. There's not a whole lot of people shooting. It's mostly just small-arm stuff. But like I say, we can't hear it. We've got four dogs and special needs fosters. None of them have ever even noticed any sound outside. Really, where we are on Pleasant Ridge, we can't tell the difference between what's the gun range and what's the hunters on the adjoining property next door. It's, I have no idea where it's coming from. The question of the indoor ranges, Murfreesboro does have indoor ranges, and they are, as you were pointing out earlier, there's bullet holes in the ceiling. Yes, they're the most unsafe places to go. That's not where I taught my grandkids to shoot. You've got armed strangers that are within twelve inches of your kids. It's a terrible environment. Outdoor is where it is. It's where it's safe. I know this family personally. Everything they do is top-tier. It would be the safest family environment you can get. Keep looking at this map, and I'm jealous, because there are so many people that have so much property that they can go shoot, and there are so many of us that do not, that we rely on places to go, and we have to pay for that. Just a couple of numbers. The USCCA, which is the United States Concealed Carry Association, they say that there are fifty-one instructors in Rutherford County. Thirty-seven of them are active. Every single one of these people leave Rutherford County to work, and they take Rutherford County residents with them. It's a lot of money. And they're all going to Woodbury. They're going to Manchester. They're going to Lewisburg. I shoot at every one of these ranges, and everywhere I go, it's Rutherford County tax. It's missing out a lot of revenue. There's so much to be brought in with it. Like I say, it's a family thing, you know. Parents teach their kids how to hunt. They teach self-defense. It's a great environment to teach, outside, to teach kids safety and education and how to protect ourselves. And of all the things that Rutherford County's got, we have a, we can go ice skating two weeks out of the year in Murfreesboro, but you can't shoot outside. So, it's just common sense. It's time to take what all the other counties are taking away from us. That's it. Thank you.
Joe Frank, do you have something?
Yes, I've had numerous calls on this from people, and just about every call I've had has been against this. So, I'm going to make a motion to be denied.
Inappropriate motion. Joe Frank, you're not a member of this commission? But we'll take your recommendation into consideration.
My name is Kim Bailey, and I also live at 10606 Vaught Road. My husband spoke a little earlier. We have lived in Rediville or owned property in Rediville for about six years. We had lived for seventeen years in the city of Murfreesboro. When our children grew up, we wanted to move somewhere that was pleasant and quiet. My husband had never lived in the country, and it was his dream to live in the country. So, now we do. We have just under six acres. We don't have horses. We don't have cows. But we do have birds, and we have turkey, and we have deer, and we have quiet, and we have peace. And we don't want to see that destroyed. We moved for a neighborhood. We've been welcomed by our neighbors. We still work, so we're not home much, but we hope that one day we will be and we'll be able to sit on our porch and enjoy the peace and the quiet, not the constant sound of gunfire. I talked briefly to Mr. Caffey, who does live in Cannon County, and Cannon County is one of the poorest counties in the state. So, I'm not sure why he isn't urging everybody to run to OK Corral and bring some tax money into Cannon County. So, that was a little weird to me. He was a gentleman who just spoke and didn't announce his name. And he does live in Cannon County, not in Rutherford County. So, that was odd. I did speak also for a moment to Mr. Agostino, and I respect his desire to be able to teach his grandchildren to shoot. And my husband shoots guns. I mean, I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is someone thinking it's their right to come into our community and shoot, because Mr. Agostino lives about two miles out the Bradival Road from town. He does not live in Rediville. One other thing I'd like to add is that I started a Nextdoor.com group for Rediville. My husband and I were in Indiana at a family funeral Thursday night when we found out about this. And as soon as we got back to Murfreesboro, I made a posting on that site with all the information about this proposal and about the meetings. There were several men who had commented on a post that another neighbor of mine had made earlier. They were all in favor of it. But what was interesting is that in Nextdoor, you can open up your community to others near you. All of the men who were in favor were in the Kitterell-Bradival community. They were not in Rediville. No one in Rediville has been in favor of it. And the last thing I'd like to add is that I am a native of this area. I grew up in Cannon County on Doolittle Road, which, if you know Cannon County, Doolittle connects to Pleasant Ridge, which is where OK Corral is. And I can tell you, my brother still lives in the house we grew up on. We have many friends and some relatives further up the road that hate the OK Corral. They hate the traffic it brings. They hate the noise. They hate everything about it. So, it is not welcomed in that community with open arms. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Annette Lane. I live at 2801 Wilson Overall Road in Murfreesboro. I am one of the owners of Bullseye. I have a lot of facts and information, so I just went ahead and printed for you what I have so that we can go through this as quickly as possible. So Bullseye Gun has been open almost five years. We are family-owned and operating. We went into this endeavor knowing that we would be competing with huge online conglomerates when customers can order guns without paying state and local sales tax. We knew that we had to offer such outstanding service and instill such confidence in our customers that they would support us. What we did not anticipate were three new gun stores coming to town, but as someone said earlier, it is inevitable and it is coming. However, our desire to offer outstanding customer service has worked well for us. We have five out of five stars on Facebook with over 200 reviews. We have over 100 recommendations. We have 4.5 stars on both Yelp and Google. We won the 2018 Ruthie Award for the Best Outdoor Shop, which is awesome considering that the only thing we sell is guns. It speaks volumes that our community voted for us in the outdoor sports category. More importantly, we pour ourselves back into the community. We won both the Mayor's Cup and the Best Business Float in the 2018 Murfreesboro Christmas Parade. We do our best to make people smile. We work closely with the Stones River Friends of the NRA. The Friends are not lobbyists on a national level. They are a small group who works hard to support our county high school trap and skeet teams. They pour thousands of dollars into our county schools, over 200,000 at my last update. This money is used for trap and skeet guns for kids or programs who cannot afford the guns, or for teams who are just starting up. They also purchase shotgun shells for the teams and offer college scholarships. We have taught the Eddie Eagle Program to young children. We are very concerned about safety, you guys. If you don't know, the Eddie Eagle Program is a fabulous teaching method for small children. They do it in a song, it's kind of like Veggie Tales, it goes on and on, but basically what they tell them is stop, don't touch, run away, tell a grown-up. And it is amazing how fast these kids can learn this, and they get it, and they understand it. We look forward to teaching this course on a regular basis once we have the proper amount of space on John Bragg Highway. We also work with the local chapters of Ducks Unlimited and National Turkey Wild Federation. We work with War Trace Regulators in Cannon County. You know who we are, now we want to share with you what our true plans are for the future. In Rutherford County, there are over 20 firearm retail sales outlets, but no outdoor range. This is a staggering statistic. This firmly establishes the fact that a majority of Rutherford County residents are gun enthusiasts, including hunters, recreational shooters, collectors, and those purchasing firearms for personal protection, which has become a big thing in 2019. Yet, we can only demonstrate safe gun handling to a certain extent while inside a building. Over and over, our customers have asked us for a range, an outdoor range, that is not loud, not smoky, not scary, and that is within a reasonable driving distance. David, you want to come on up here, please? Presently, our customers and our residents have to leave Rutherford County to find a safe place for outdoor shooting, in either a training capacity or recreational capacity. In a county with an estimated 150,000 gun owners, this is not only a huge detriment to our county revenue, but a disservice to our residents. Our range will provide a safe atmosphere and personal training for all of these groups. The retail side of this location will include gun rentals, ammo sales, some firearm sales, and classroom space. I've heard some discussion about it being a pawn shop, it's not. The only thing we pawn is guns at our store, but we won't do that at the range location. We want our customers to have the opportunity to become educated and trained in the safe storage and handling of firearms. When any proposal pertaining to guns is on the table, safety is always the major concern. We share that concern at every single level. Shooting on the family farm is quickly becoming a thing of the past due to tremendous growth with rural areas becoming major developments. At our range, we have planned and will be prepared for every conceivable precaution in order to ensure the safety of our customers and our neighbors. We will meet and exceed all requirements in the safe operation of an outdoor shooting range. Okay, now I want to introduce David Haney. He is a sound expert. We have had him, we hired him to go out there.
Ma'am, we've been going on for a little over five minutes, you need to wrap it up.
Okay, so here's David Haney. He'll introduce himself.
I visited the property Sunday.
Would you please give your name?
David Haney, I live at 134 Sureview Drive in Murfreesboro. Visited the property Sunday while there was some shooting going on. I took some decibel rings that averaged right around 70, and that's not very, I think a conversation is 60 to 65 a normal conversation, so that's...
Thank you. Could you possibly wait one minute? There's a lady sitting on this front row that's got up about 10 times in a row, and... I'm sorry?
I'm the guy with PTSD, and I'm gonna have to leave because...
Okay, sorry. You're gonna have to wait another minute. It's a good idea.
Hi, everybody. My name's John Mathis. I had a lawyer earlier, but I just want to bring this up. I know we're going over scientific data and all this stuff. I've been in combat 12 times. I buried 32 of my brothers. I have severe PTSD. It's not the sound decimals. The sound itself is a trigger to my PTSD. I've had four friends commit suicide. Don't let this happen.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
My name's Jane Rust, and I live on 373 Old Woodbury Pike, and really, there isn't anything to say following that, except since I got up here, I'm gonna tell you that my issue is with any commercial development in this site, no matter what it is, because it's not part of the comprehensive plan to have a commercial enterprise at this site. They set up development nodes to protect the residential areas, and this is not a development node. And also, I think that the market has a lagoon service, it doesn't have a perk site. So, I would endorse the opposition to this, and we just really don't need it. We need to stick to our comprehensive plan for traffic safety and for residential protection. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your patience.
My name is Teresa Tate. I live at 1860 Rediville Street, and I have lived there for 68 years. I am in Rediville proper, less than a mile is a crow flies from where this establishment is supposedly going to be built. Any time of any day, I can step out on my front porch and hear all the traffic on John Bragg Highway. A gunshot is not going to be buffeted from where I live. Now, I call it downtown, I live in downtown Rediville. In a section that is, has about 12 houses, we have two autistic people. One of them's a child, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, his mother contacted one of the people on some commission about this, that this child has autism, he loves to be outside, and she has lots of entertainment going on for him, where he's planting flowers and he can play outside. Any kind of loud noise, she said, quote, "overwhelming" for him. I've listened to what people had to say, and I just hope to goodness that this does not come down to money. Rutherford County is rich. Don't ruin Rediville, our beautiful little place, our beautiful, quiet little residential place, because of revenue that might come into this county from people coming and shooting guns and disturbing everything that we live for in our community. Thank you.
My name's Caleb Gregory. I live at 10523 East Lyon, Rediville, Tennessee, and I'm actually one of the co-owners of it, so as far as everybody's saying, build one by your house. Here I am. So I'm a Rediville resident, and I'm a gunsmith mostly, and I understand ballistics, I understand velocity, I understand more of that than anybody in this room. And that's why, one of the reasons I picked this property, is because of the big backdrop of a hill. I mean, it's, we're gonna take all precaution. There's, property is safe to shoot at, has, I mean, the hill, you can see on the map, if they show it, how steep the hill actually gets, it creates a natural, huge barrier for ricochet, or what you want to call it. It's not really a concern in this situation. Somebody said something about beer at the gas station, I mean, you can, there's gas stations everywhere outside on target and everything. We have animals, I have cows, I have goats, I have chickens, I have three dogs, we own 16 acres, and I shoot all the time, all the time. Doesn't bother any of them. I've been to shotgun ranges, skeet and stuff like that, there's deer walking out there, you have to wait till they go by. They get used to it, it's not a big deal. Farmer Roundsby owns 300 acres with, I don't know how many hundreds of head of cattle he has. We can get a shootout to 800 yards of his place, high-power rifles. Cows just sit there and stare at us. You know, I feel like that's, I mean, considering the fact that animals get really used to it. As far as John and his wife, they're great people. They're actually one of the customers at our store. They've come and bought guns from us. We've been out there before, we've talked to them while we're shooting, you know, nothing against them, I mean, they're, he's a good guy. And like I said, they're regular customers, and we know them. So, here I am, and I live in Rediville, and I'm for the range.
Thank you.
Robert P. I live at 4047 Bivens Hill Road, Reedville, Tennessee, and at night, I can hear highway 70s trucks roaring up and down, and I promise you, I'd be able to hear a gunshot over there. Couple of things that I want to point out, and I hope y'all were listening very close when Ms. Rust was talking, because she hit the nail on the head. It's not just about a gun range, this is about a commercial zoning. This is not a commercial node. And those of you that have been here a while have seen other things come up here from Reedville, and you've seen this kind of opposition for development in that area. This is a rural area, and we want to keep it rural. I mean, that's the main gist right there. You know, I shoot guns, I'm very pro-gun, Eddie Eagle Program is wonderful, and it needs to go, but this needs to go somewhere where people don't mind it. You know, yes, gun ranges as a whole are safe, there's one pretty close, the OK Corral. I think there's only been one person killed up there so far, but, well, that is a fact. But, again, this is not a commercial node, and yes, I'm pretty sure they're on a lagoon because that's nothing but Flat Rock over there at the little convenience store, and you don't have water. But one of the, there's several problems I've got with this. First of all, I don't care who comes to you and asks for something, these people should have reached out to the community and said, "Hey, let's have a meeting, let's talk about this. Here's what I can do for you, you know, here's, I want to hear your concerns, I want to work on this with you." That didn't happen. You know, that didn't happen. We just kind of got blindsided there, and most of us out there in Reedville are kind of show-me people, we're not from Missouri, but, you know, talk to us. Don't come up behind me and try to surprise me with something. You know, most of us shoot. You know, some of us are darn good marksmen, I know my wife is. That's why I just say, "Yes, ma'am," and go on, but, but again, asking you not to rezone this property, because it's not a commercial zone, a node, as you'd say. The people out there, this is a residential area, we want to keep it residential, and that's what I would like for you to think about when you're voting on this, is why there's no water, there's no place to do so, you know, it's not fitting in with the rest of the community. Thank you.
I want, first I want to...
Ms. Woods? Put your phone down. Thank you.
I think I just want to go over a few things that have already been said about the sound, the noise. Now, our little community, it's like a little valley that just kind of, it's almost like a stream down through there. I can go outside and hear my neighbor talking that lives a half-mile down the road some days. We live on the Bradival Highway and the Farrell Hollow Road. The gun range over on Big Springs Road is 9.78 miles from us. Some days, we can hear their guns. Now, I don't, Cripple Creek Road, Farrell Hollow Road, Vault Road, the other roads out in the area are not 10 miles away from this, what this gun range would be. And I think it has something to do with the way the valley is set through there. Noise carries. You know, any time we have horses, a lot of people up and down our road have horses, I know our neighbor, 4th of July, and I know this is, you know, not quite the same thing, she has to put her horses up. She has Tennessee walking horses, show horses, and they're scared to death of loud noises. We have dairy cattle, and it is a proven fact that gunshots, a lot of your, I guess, high-decibel-type noises are very detrimental to production and reproduction in our dairy cattle. And I do want to say, you know, we appreciate the people that are applying for this, for what they've done for the community, we just don't want it on our end of Rutherford County. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Ginger Baird, and I'm not going to rehash anything that's already been said, but when I learned about this, I went out into the community and actually talked to people, got input, asked, you know, pro, con, you know, what's your opinion? So, I just want it made a matter of record that I have 97 signatures on here, and that was all just gotten in a two-day time span that I had to get, given I didn't learn about it until kind of at the last minute. But I just want it made a matter of record that, that it's, we've got that much support that is in opposition of it. Someone mentioned, you know, schools and needing more places to shoot. My son shoots trap, so, you know, we're gun owners, don't have a problem with that. But he certainly doesn't want to listen to gunshot, you know, six, seven days a week from sunup to sundown, as other people have already presented to you. But first, you know, it's the commercial part. We're a rural area. You know, some people moved there, and for that particular reason, I was born and raised there. And I want to preserve the land, preserve the rural aspect of it. So, I just urge you to take those things into consideration and vote no and oppose this for commercial property, in essence, to be a shooting range in a retail space.
Address 574 Cripple Creek Road in Rediville.
Thank you.
The, the list, if it's going to be part of the record, needs to be submitted.
If we can not, we can make a copy and give the original subject up.
Okay. Now?
Sorry.
Now?
Yes.
Sure.
Give our office a call tomorrow, and we'll make sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm Alexandria Gregory. I live at 10523 East Lyon Road, which is actually right off of Cripple Creek. I so appreciate you asking for that list, and I would be definitely curious to see the addresses that are on that, because we've had so many comments about people being in Bradyville or people being in Murfreesboro. The population in Rediville's just a little under 3,000. In, in Murfreesboro, it's over 136,000. So naturally, people from Murfreesboro area are going to want to come shoot at a range that would be in their county. Nonetheless, we're talking about Rutherford County and what Rutherford County needs. I have livestock. We shoot guns all the time. Doesn't bother them at all. We live right across the street from a farmer. He has over 300, 300 head of cattle. Doesn't bother him at all. He actually invites us over all of the time. We're actually lucky enough to have our own land to shoot on, but we have people all the time ask us, "Can we come shoot at your land?" And honestly, my husband's Caleb, and when he originally mentioned this, I thought, "Well, there's inside gun ranges." And he said, "Well, people want to shoot outside," and I just didn't get it. And I think it was honestly a sign, after he told me he wanted to do this as a new part of the business, because the next week, somebody asked to come shoot out at the house, and I said, "I'm sorry, we won't be home today." But I'm, I think On Target's open on, on the weekend, and they said, "We don't want to shoot inside. We want to shoot outside." And so, it's something that, that the community is asking for. We moved there, I guess, in the last year. I know when we were looking for land, we would find something, we would fall in love with it, and it would be sold, because that supply and demand, it's, it's just the natural cause of that. But this land is set vacant for a really long time, and I think it's because naturally, nobody wants to build a house behind a gas station. That's pretty much grounds for a commercial area. I wouldn't build a house behind a gas station, that's for sure. There's been a lot of comments about sunup to sundown with shooting. We haven't even talked about ours. It's certainly not going to be sunup to sundown, so you can rest, rest your minds there that we're not shooting from sunup to sundown. I live in the Rediville-Cripple Creek area, and I definitely am for this gun range.
Since the presentation's in a, in the public hearing, how much time do you need?
It won't be long, Jeff. Commissioners, I just want to ask, request of you first off, is that I would like to defer the vote tonight, if we could, to meet with the neighbors. We were all, well, it's been requested by some of the neighbors that we do that, and I think, I think as responsible business owners, they would like to do that as well. The second thing is, is a lot of the concerns, as we see in a lot of rezoning, some of them are very founded, and some of them are a little bit not as, as well-grounded. And so, as Caleb mentioned, you know, this is, they're not doing this as a hobby. This is a business. This is a situation that they found as a need. And so, whether people are for that need or against that need, that's not what we're talking about. We're doing it because there's a need. So, I want to clarify that. And, and as far as Rediville's concerned, if there's something we can do to work with them, that would be our goal. But it's like, the way it sounded tonight, is everyone in Rediville, no one owns a gun and no one hunts, and there's nothing that goes on out there regarding guns. So, so with that in mind, our client's more than willing to try to sit down and try to see if there's something we can do to better understand their concerns. Really, the site selection, the design, the preliminary design, very preliminary, but really, the way the gun ranges are oriented, the site selection, the, the fact that literally only 40% of the site would be disturbed with a gun range, you really create these shooting corridors. That's designed for safety. That's designed for buffering. As far as the need is concerned, the location is in proximity to Murfreesboro. That's where a lot of their client base is coming from. So, this is a, this is a good proximity location for their neighbors and their, and their patrons. And so, it's not a, it, it's not like we're just trying to do this because there's, it's not well thought through. This is a location, it's on John Bragg Highway, which is a major commercial highway. Granted, it's, it's not zoned commercially right now, but we know what's going on on John Bragg. We also know what's going on in Rediville. There's a lot of pressure for growth. So, you can't, you can't say this commercial corridor is just going to stay for residents. Is that something we can't do? However, so, so that would be our request, if we could, if we could sit down with them, see if there's any sort of things we can do to work with them, bring better clarification to exactly what we're going to do, as was mentioned, the hours we're going to do it, any kind of concerns. You know, we haven't gone into a lot of the detail in terms of operation hours, in terms of how it's going to flow. As far as the building's concerned, like I said, we don't have any kind of site plan and construction documents. They have secured a well survey letter for the water component for the site. We also know there is a perk site that has to be retested for the perk component. And as far as the ammunition storage, they've, they've reached out to the fire department, and what's been required is a firewall, a certain type of firewall that will contain any kind of issues, particularly in the building. Well, we can bring that level of detail to this, to the building itself. We just haven't got that far yet. But as far as, you know, the noise abatement, safety, proximity to commercial, proximity to Rediville, we feel like we might have a better opportunity to sit down with them, meet at the community center there, we've done that before, and, and try to understand exactly what their concerns are, and really come back to the best of our ability and know what we can respond to and what is something we're going to have a very difficult time responding to, and let you all know, as planning commissioners, how, how we've come to that conclusion. But secondly, like they said, this is a business in town. This is a need in the county. There's 150,000 people in the county. There are a lot of people who practice the use of firearms. This can be a safety-related program, teaching-related program, recreational-related program, and it's going to happen somewhere. This is kind of one of those things, well, we don't want it to happen here. The question is, where? And so, if you're on a commercial highway, on acres, or only disturbing 40%, leaving most of it natural, really respecting the fact that topography, vegetation, orientation, and location are all in favor for something of this kind of use, we'd like to try to explain that better to see if we can get to some, some closure with them. So, that would be our request, is for a deferral tonight, so we can get more information from the neighbors. We're more than willing to do that.
Thank you. No. We're done. The applicant has made a request to defer. It's not within his power to defer. It's within your power, and I'll entertain a motion to defer if you so desire. If not, we'll move on. He has a right to withdraw, and he can do that.
Now, my question, have we closed the hearing? I didn't, I didn't hear us close the hearing.
The public hearing is still open. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Once again, it's not up to, it's up to us. It's up to this commission to defer, and I'll entertain that motion if, if you so desire. The applicant, applicant has the ability to withdraw and start the process all over again, and I'm not advocating a deferral. We've had a lot of people who spent a lot of time here tonight, and, and they're probably going to be spending a lot more time Wednesday night before the BZA. So, ball's in our court. You can, you have several options in front of you, but commissioners, it's, it's time for, time for us to, to move, make some type of decision. Any comments, any questions are all still appropriate at this time. Let me just say that although the public hearing is closed, the county commissioner in that area made a statement a little bit earlier, and although he's not a member of this commission, if he wishes to address this commission, since he represents that district, Mr. Commissioner Jornigan, you're welcome to say a few words if you want to. Very good. Okay, commissioners, we're, we're back to business.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll get the ball rolling. These kind of topics, gun ranges, quarries, autocross, things like that, always have sensitivity to me in terms of the legal nuisance aspect. And legal nuisance encompasses a variety of things, including noise, dust, fumes, which fumes, aroma, smell, things like that. And, you know, the zoning process is a tool for us, and, but it doesn't necessarily end at the property line. So, the whole community protection is something I, certainly I strive for. I think this whole body strives for the preservation of the community. So, I, I want to hear more discussion, but I, I'm certainly concerned about the noise. I, I challenge the gentleman that came up with the 80-decibel reading. That, that tells us nothing. That obviously was not standing next to the gun, because that would be impossible. Gunfire, particularly a rifle, is more like 160 decibels. So, you know, I would strike that from the record if there was a record to strike. And topography certainly plays a big role on how noise carries. We would almost have to get in a bus and drive down there and experience it in real time to find out how noise carries down there. But, you know, I just wanted to throw that out, that noise is a nuisance, and it's something I take, very, I'm very passionate about it, and I want to hear the rest.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, just make a comment or two. Agreeing with everything that you said, Commissioner Kush, just a reminder to the planning commission, the gun range, regardless of what you decide tonight, even if you approve this, you are not approving the gun range. So, I just want to make sure everybody understands that. If you deny this because you don't want to see a gun range, the zoning of the property is irrelevant, as far as the gun range is concerned, because that's still going to be heard before the Board of Zoning Appeals. That's where that's, decision's going to be made one way or the other. So, I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. Now, some of the other things that were discussed tonight, as far as infrastructure, you know, water supply, soils, traffic, those kind of things, those are things that are outlined in the zoning ordinance, as far as things to consider when you're looking at the zoning of property, if it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. There were statements made tonight, this is not in a development note, that is true. Just want you to understand that. It is along John Bragg Highway, which in this area is identified as a scenic corridor, according to the comprehensive, scenic rural corridor. It does have some provisions in the, in the comprehensive plan for non-residential uses. But again, that's where you have to determine, is that a compatible use with the area, or is the zoning, is really, again, is what you're looking at, not so much the use of a gun range, but is the zoning, do you feel, compatible with the area? And if it is, why not? Those are the things that you want to base any kind of a decision on, not because we don't want a gun range. Again, that's not this body's decision. That'll be the Board of Zoning Appeals' decision, just to make sure that everybody's clear on that.
Thank you, Doug.
Doug, I have a question. If, if there is not a soil site, and it identifies a 97-model soil site, but I know where a property's been sold more recently than that, with an, with a found soil site that, when it was resold, there was no soil site. So, there's a good chance that there's no soil site, in my opinion, based on what Mike pulled up, the soils he pulled up on the map. So, if we, you know, what would be allowed in this district if we did approve it?
Well, I mean, as far as the uses, that would be outlined in the ordinance. Now, as far as-
What could be done without a soil site?
Well, and I'm going to defer, to a certain extent, to Ms. Bell, our co-director, to make sure I'm speaking properly. So, if I'm saying something wrong, Daniel, please jump in. If it can be demonstrated through a soil scientist, they get out there and they have soil testing done, and it is determined that there is no perk site on the property, then there are alternative methods that may be employed for whatever business is on the property. But that's only if that there is no soil site on a property. And Ms. Bell, do I have that correct?
Yes. They would have to demonstrate that there is no, through sources, soil scientists, et cetera, that there is no soils on the property before we would entertain any alternative method.
And alternative methods then are allowed on commercial properties?
It would depend on the use.
So, unfortunately, there's, I mean, there's a certain amount of the questions we can't answer, because we just don't know.
Doug, Doug, if, if it's denied here tonight, and it goes to BZA Wednesday-
That's correct.
-gun range is approved, so what's he got?
A gun range, essentially, which will still have to have some sort of a site plan. You are allowed to do some accessory uses, you know, probably not to the extent that they were wanting to do, but there are some accessory uses, can be done as far as commercial sales and things with that.
Okay, if it is, I'm sorry, if, if BZA does approve it, then does all that have to come back to us for anything else?
As far as the use of the property?
Yeah.
No. If it's approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, the only thing you would see at that point would be a site plan, at the planning commission for a site plan review. Yes. Yeah, the planning commission would see that. That's correct.
But it wouldn't see a site plan.
Right. You don't have, like, the ability to oversee or to over, to turn over what the decision was of the, the Board of Zoning Appeals. Only the courts have that authority. So, the only thing you would see at that point would be a site, if, if it were approved on Wednesday. Of course, that's, we're talking speculative, but if it were approved, the only thing you would see at that point would be a site plan, coming back to our, our day meeting.
I know Commissioner Kush-
I know Commissioner Kush- And I think the store has been there over 20 years.
Mike's not on. Sorry.
Since we do have a plan for this and the zoning is a tool, for me, the veteran that has been there for generations next door with PTSD, that's enough for me to question this application.
And I'll just say again that the decision, and I understand with the noise and everything, that goes back to the gun range, which is not an approved use. And even if you approve this tonight, you're not approving a gun range. If you're denying it based on that, I would say you probably need more than that. I'm not saying that there's no validity to the argument. All I'm saying is, even if you approve this tonight, you're not approving the gun range. If you deny it tonight, don't deny it because of the gun range because that's not really for discuss, that, we've heard a lot about that and I knew we would, but, and that's fine, but that's not a decision that the Planning Commission is making tonight. It's on the zoning of the property.
Doug, when was the application made prior, prior to this one? As I understood it earlier tonight, there was an application made for truck storage-
Oh, yeah, it was back in 2006.
2006.
Yeah, under our older zoning code. And it was denied.
It was denied, Dan.
Correct.
No, I, I mean, I shoot some, I have, I let people hunt on my property, but I think we've talked about this long enough. I have a nephew that shot competitively, I had a good friend whose daughter shot nationally, competed nationally. But I don't think this is the right place for the right time, so I'm going to make a motion to deny.
If I can, Mr. Ball, if I can, again, I understand your motion, but again, it almost sounded like you were doing it based on the gun range. Okay. Sir?
I don't think it's good, it wasn't good in 2006, I don't think it's good now. And it, it, I mean, I don't think it's a good place for gun range, I don't think it's a good place for commercial zoning. As the lady pointed out earlier, it's not in the long-term plan. We've redone it since 2006. We didn't include this as commercial property and I think it'd be better to leave it alone.
Doug, I think you can add to that the points of the questions about infrastructure in terms of water and soil site. Those are also elements that I think support the denial.
If he's willing to make that part of his motion.
Yeah, that was part of the reason I was asking the questions earlier. So, you know, what else could go there? You know, what are we approving for? And the soil site really concerns me, even though there are alternative methods. Thank you, Rhonda.
Hey Doug, we're, how close is the-
Wait, just a second. We have a motion and we have a second? Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Now we're on for discussion, I'm sorry, Lee.
That's fine. Where is the closest commercial node identified in the planning document? I just could remember myself.
It's further down John Bragg Highway where Joby Jackson is going to come out. It's, I don't have the exact-
Good ways away.
It's a little down the road.
So the only commercial zoned property, the store, the store, the only commercial property within a-
Yeah, if you look on the, if you look at the map right here.
Myself.
Yep, yeah, you can see the, yeah, Mike's highlighting it right there. Now, once you cross over the border to Cannon County, you know, that's a whole different county, we don't have jurisdiction. At my understanding, I believe that's still the case, is they don't have zoning, so, I'm sorry? The whole county does, or just Woodbury? Okay, that must have been recent approval then, but, okay. I was mistaken.
Though with the character of the area, this wasn't identified as a node in the planning document.
This is not one of the nodes.
Okay, yeah.
No, sir. It's on, like I said a little earlier, it is on a, what's termed a scenic rural corridor, which does make provisions for uses. Now, that doesn't mean that every application that you see, you have to approve because of that, because there's always a timing element, there's always the rest that goes along with it.
Just identified areas.
But it is shown as that, yeah.
Okay. And that store's been there over 20-plus years, they've said?
It's been there a long, long time, yes, sir. Since I've been here and I've been here for about 13.
I have another question for Doug. So when we were doing the comprehensive plan, we would not have identified that spot as commercial had that store not already been there?
Well, when we were actually looking at the zoning ordinance, that's why we did what we did there.
Right, but I'm saying we wouldn't have randomly chosen that spot for commercial had that store not already been there.
No, no, if that was already, if that, if that had just been a vacant piece of property, we'd have left it residential.
I'm sorry, and I just had one follow-up. I guess I'm still surprised on the special exception, that this would be allowed in rural low density, because we don't have a lower, we don't have a lower rating-
Agricultural, residential, anything that's considered an outdoor entertainment. It's basically when we approve these regulations, changes, and it's been a few years, because we came back to do this a little separately for the outdoor amusements. We just made a special exception across the board. We didn't want to see it by right anywhere, so, right. But yeah, I mean, there is one zone, agricultural residential, which is a one unit per five acres, which is a little, which is less dense than this, but, but yeah, we didn't want it by rate, so. Now, if that's something you'd like us to revisit, you know, as moving on, that's always something we can do, so.
Doug, part of my motion, Rhonda added to it, and I would like to add two other things and point out that the county commissioner from that area as opposed to, and the county commissioner from the adjacent, adjacent area as opposed to, and both of them are longtime county commissioners.
Any other comments, any other questions?
Nick, my question is to you. Is there any, any legal concern in your mind that the applicant has made a request to defer and we're not honoring that request? Because in my time on this commission, we may have done it, but I don't recall ever not honoring a request to defer.
When it comes to anything in bylaws or in our zoning ordinance, I'm not aware of anything that would give the applicant a right to do that, so we would have to rely upon the Robert's Rules of Order. And I'm not a parliamentarian, just like my predecessor wasn't, but generally speaking, when it comes to postponing a motion to a different date, everybody okay over there? Yeah, fireworks, right? All right. When it comes to postponing a motion that's currently before you to a different date, that has to be by vote and you can debate it and it's, it's subject to majority vote. Now, the applicant does have the ability to withdraw the application before a vote's taken on the motion. Doug, that's probably happened before and they'd have to file a new application fee.
It would just be, yeah, the whole process would just start over fresh, basically, yes.
They have the right to do that.
Any other questions or any other comments? Let's, let's make perfectly clear what we're, what we're voting on. Could you possibly read that motion back or could? Mike, that'd be great.
Before we go, make sure we got it down. If, before we do that, Mike, before we do that, Mr. Chairman, the applicant, I don't know if he's wanting to, I don't know what he's wanting to do, but he's, I think he's trying to make himself known here.
At this particular time, I'm going to deny his request and continue with our discussion and after, after this, the discussion's over with, we'll recognize him. But Mike, go ahead and restate your-
All right, I'm going to make a motion deny based, based on a previous denial. It is outside of the comprehensive plan that we, we have redone since the previous denial. And I think any other potential uses, if this one, and we all know what we're talking about here, did not go through, I would be uncomfortable with those. So I'll make a motion to not, deny, and also based on the fact that the local commissioner and the adjacent commissioner have both spoken against it.
And the infrastructure?
The infrastructure.
So you're not-
Definitely the soil site, the infrastructure and all that.
You're not necessarily making the motion, you're restating what your motion was, correct?
Restating what my motion was.
Thank you.
I wanted all that included in the motion as a reason.
Thank you. And that's in the second, right? Commissioner P? Okay. The applicant has a statement, we'll hear it before we vote.
Thank you, Chairman Phillips. Commissioners, we would like to withdraw the application at this time. And the reason we would is we still would like to see if there's any kind of concessions we could make with the community and any clarifications we can make on the use. So if that would be a possibility, we'd like to withdraw the application. Thank you.
Give me one minute. Let me do my best to explain something. I will probably have to have Nick straighten this up for me. But the applicant has withdrawn his rezoning request before this commission had a, the opportunity to vote on it, which means that the motion is now void and the discussion is ended. But before the discussion is ended, let me say that I have a, as chairman, I'm going to officially say that, I have a particular heartburn over this. And it bothers me that we've gone through this whole discussion and spent two hours, not only of your time and my time, but of your time as well. And I have a particular heartburn over this, that I'll do my best to be open-minded, but the whole deal is that I take some offense in that motion to withdraw, but it is a legal motion and that voids, it is a legal request and that request has to be honored according to our regulations and that supersedes not only the motion that was made and a potential vote, but all of this discussion that we had tonight. Nick, did I miss anything?
No, Mr. Chairman, you didn't. And of course, everything that was submitted tonight is, is part of a record somewhere. And so if there is a new application that is brought, you will have to go through this process again, but what was said tonight and what was submitted is certainly things I think you could consider as long as the facts are still the same.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, any, any re-application, they'll have to reapply, this, this ends this application. And I'm saying, I'm asking that mainly for the clarity of the people in the audience.
Basically, yes, that is correct. This application is now done.
Any commercial zoning for any purpose.
Right, this, for this application. Now, if he wants to come back next month and ask for something different, that's certainly within his ability. But I will say that, like the other applications that are going to move forward to the Board of Commissioners, because he has withdrawn this, this will not go any further than what it is right now. This is, this one is done.
But, but much like you said, though, he still has a BZA.
The Board of Zoning Appeal Application on Wednesday is still valid.
Illegally.
Yes, sir. That hearing is still scheduled. Now, if he calls tomorrow and withdraws that, we'll do our best to let people know, but I would just recommend calling our office to find out. But as of right now, that application is still pending and that is going, is scheduled to be heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals on Wednesday, starting at 4:30 in this room.
Special exemption has nothing to do with the commercial zoning.
Because for this particular use, that's correct. Yeah, there are some uses that are allowed in residential zones but are in commercial zones by special exception. This is special exception across the board. So the zoning of this particular use is irrelevant.
Since we're speaking out loud and there's a lot of interested people here, if the BZA approves this request, what happens next?
If it, if the BZA approves the use, the next time it would be brought before, Planning Commission would be for site plan approval, if they ever decided to move forward with it. We have uses out there that get approval, but then, for whatever reason, never submit anything. But that answers, I think, the question is eventually if they were to ever develop the property, it would have to come back through Planning Commission during our day meeting, not for a public hearing, just for a site plan review.
Mr. Chairman, I have a follow-up question to that. So if they should get the approval from BZA and then they don't decide to go with the specific plan that was in front of BZA, can they do anything else or any version of that? Or do they have to live strictly within whatever the application was to BZA?
Well, they would have to live within, with that situation, since the zoning is changed, has not been changed, since they've withdrawn that, they would be allowed to do whatever would be allowed in the RL zone. Now, let's say they came back and decided, well, you know, we don't want to do shooting range, we'd rather do a gun shop. They can't do that, that's a commercial use. So that would have to go back through the whole rezoning process. They'd be allowed to do what they received the special exception for, but that's it. You know, if they wanted to change their special exception to a different use, if it were allowed by special exception residential zone, they would still have to come back through the process. They just couldn't say, well, we have a special exception, we can do whatever we want with the special exceptions. That wouldn't, that wouldn't work with us.
I just have one more thing, Mr. Chairman, and this is really for the, the audience and the folks who are watching. I've been up here a long time and I've sat through a lot of public hearings and this process did exactly what it was designed to do and that was in an effort to try to protect the community's rights and the property owner's rights. And so I feel like we did that and, and I just want to compliment this group. They were all very respectful. I know they got a little animated a couple of times, but for the most part, everybody who came to speak was very respectful. They didn't repeat themselves a lot, they gave new information pretty much each time. And so I just want to compliment them. They, as frustrating as I'm sure this is for them tonight, they would like to have left with a deferral. It really was a win for the Redevil community. They represented themselves very well.
Rhonda, well spoken, as always. All right, Doug, should BZA grant the gun range, which would be what their request would be? And it comes back to us, then my comments of earlier of nuisance such as sound, things like that certainly come into play, then hours of operation, questions that we could ask such as the length of the range, is it a 350-yard range, a 500, a 1,000-yard range? Things like that all come into play, right?
We'll have a better idea at the Planning Commission of what that is now. And like I like to say to people, of course, we're, again, we're speaking hypotheticals right now because we don't know what's going to happen on Wednesday. But hypothetically speaking, then for the sake of argument, should it be approved, it comes back to the Planning Commission for a site plan approval. If there are other regulations that they have to abide by, be they federal, state, local, whatever, regarding lead testing, regarding noise, of course, we have performance standards in our ordinance that they have to abide by, those kind of things, those will all have to be met, you know, even though there are things, as far as like the federal and state regulations, those may be things that we don't necessarily enforce because they're not ours. They would still have to do those regardless, so, but they would have to show us, you know, best practices, where they're getting their information as far as that goes. But yes, that would, that would be something you could look at at Planning Commission, hypothetically, again.
This brings us to the conclusion of our agenda. Staff, have any reports or any other business at this time?
No reports. I will say that, you know, a couple of months ago, we had some, we presented a report regarding quarry regulations. That's something we're still in the process of trying to kind of work through and to get a work session scheduled for. We actually had one scheduled for later this month, but the timing's not going to work out for it unfortunately, so we're still going to work diligently on that, just to be aware. We'll just meet at our normal time.
Could you please give us a little respect? Please. This meeting is not over. Doug, would you continue?
That's all I had. It's basically saying we're not going to have the training session. We did advertise it, but we're not going to have it because we're still working through the process, but, so our meeting will be nine o'clock, normal time, two weeks from today.
Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday morning, the 22nd of this month. It'll be 9:00 AM and the Planning- be 9:00 a.m. in the Planning Maze. I'd like to thank you as commissioners, you as applicants, you as citizens, participating in our process. It's meaningful when you let us know how you feel, and it's appreciated. Thank you for your time, your patience, and your attendance, we are adjourned.